So guys, we would start with what are the operators present in Oracle? So in SQL operators are categorized into SQL arithmetic operators, SQL comparison operators, SQL logical operators and SQL compound operators. So I'll explain you each of this operator in detail. First we'll go for SQL arithmetic operators. What are the operators we have under SQL arithmetic operators? The operators we have are plus for addition, minus subtract, into multiply, divide and module. These are the different operators that are present as a part of mod arithmetic operators. I'll show by writing a query for each of these operators. So guys, what are the operators we have as a part of arithmetic operators? Can anyone say? Generally, basic math guys.
Math, magical, logical.
Addition.
Addition, subtraction, multiplication, division and modules.
Modulous. These are the five different arithmetic operators we have. Let us write a query for each of this operator. So guys, how do we write query in our language? So in our SQL, whatever the query we write, we ETL testers write, that query it would start with select keyword only. So now I'll write my query starting with select keyword only. After select, I'll mention star. Star operator represents all. After star, I have mentioned from clause. After from clause will mention from which table I wanted to retrieve data. I wanted to retrieve data from employees table. So now in the place of table name, I have mentioned employees. So guys, this is the way to write a simple query. After writing the query, we need to terminate our query with a simple semicolon. So now let me terminate my query with a simple semicolon. If we have terminated our query means we are done writing a query. So guys, in simple English will end our sentences with a full stop. If we given full stop means we are done in writing that sentence in the same way in our SQL. Here we'll be writing our queries ending with a semicolon. So after writing a query, we need to run the query. How to run the query? Selecting the query we have written. So this is the query I have written. Now let me select the same. And after selecting, I'm hitting the green color play button which is present on the top of the worksheet. So guys, the area in which we are writing the queries that is known as a worksheet. And if you observe here on the top of the worksheet, you have a green color play button. If you hit this button, you would be getting what is the data present for the employees table. So I have got all the data present for the employees table. This is the way how do we write a simple query. Now we'll go for writing of query for arithmetic operators. So whatever the operator is, whatever the query we are writing, we would be writing with select keyword only. So here I have written my query starting with select keyword. After select, I wanted to perform addition between two different numbers. I wanted to perform addition between ten and five. So here I would be writing ten plus five within the parenthesis. After mentioning ten plus five, I'll mention from clause. After mentioning from clause, give will will give table name as DL and I have terminated my query with a simple semicolon. So guys, after from clause, here I have mentioned my table name as a DL. What is DL? DL it is a inbuilt table which is defined by the data engineers at the time of creation of the software itself. If you wanted to perform any operations, you can use this DL table and you can perform any of the operation. So now I wanted to perform addition operation by using DL table. So after from clause in the place of table name, I have mentioned DL and I have terminated my query with a simple semicolon. So guys, now we are done writing the query. What is the next thing you need to do? The next thing we need to do is we need to run the query. How to run the query? Selecting whatever we have written and hitting a green color play button which is present on the top of the worksheet. So I have hit this button. So I have got a output window. Where I have got my window, I have got my output window exactly below the worksheet. In that you can see guys, if I perform addition between ten and five, I would be getting fifteen. So the same has been populated in the output. This is how to write a query. Now I would be showing you one more query. So how to write a query guys? So whatever the query we are writing, we would write with select keyword only. So I have mentioned select. After that I have opened parenthesis. After opening parenthesis, guys now I wanted to perform addition between nine seventy-eight and seven sixty-five. So I have mentioned both the numbers and in between both the numbers as I wanted to perform addition, I have given plus. After giving both the numbers, mention from clause, given table name as DL and I have terminated my query with a simple semicolon. So now let me run the query guys. So here I'm done with writing the query, you know. Here we need to run the query. How to run the query? Simply selecting the query whatever we have written. So this is the query I have written. I'm selecting the query and I'm right which I have written and I'm hitting a green color play button which is present on the top of the worksheet. So let me hit this button. I have hit this button. So I have got a output window which is present exactly below the worksheet. So you can see here guys, if I perform addition between nine eighty-seven and seven sixty-five, I would get seventeen fifty-two. So the same has been present in the output window. This is all about addition operator. Now we'll go for how to perform subtraction between two numbers. So guys, whatever the operator is, we would be writing our query starting with select keyword. So here I have written select and after select, now I wanted to perform subtraction between ten and five. So I have written ten minus five. After that close the parenthesis. After closing the parenthesis, mention from clause, given table name as a DL. Here I wanted to use inbuild table. So I have mentioned the same. Now I'm done with writing a query. After writing a query, we need to terminate the query. How do we terminate our query? We'll be terminating our query with a simple semicolon. So I'll use the same here and so now let me run the query guys. So I have selected whatever I have written and I'm hitting a green color play button which is present on the top of the worksheet. So guys, now let me hit this button. You can see guys, I have performed ten minus five. What is the output? I have got the output. I have got is five. If I perform subtraction between ten and five, we'll be getting five. The same a five is present to us in the output window. Next, I wanted to perform subtraction between two numbers, another two numbers. How do we write query? We'll be writing query starting with select keyword. After select keyword, I have opened the parenthesis. After opening the parenthesis, I have given my first number as nine eighty-seven. Minus, I wanted to perform seven sixty-five. So I have mentioned the same. After mentioning the number, I have closed the parenthesis. After closing the parenthesis, we need to immediately mention from clause. After mentioning from clause, we need to give a table name as a DL and then we need to terminate our query with a simple semicolon. So guys, now let me run the query. How to run the query? Simply selecting the query whichever we have written and hitting a green color play button which is present on the top of the worksheet. So you can see here guys, I have got a output window. In that we have got our output. If we perform nine eighty-seven minus seven sixty-five, we would be getting triple two. So the same has been present in our output window. This is about subtraction operator. The next operator that is falling into the range of arithmetic operator is multiplication operator. For that multiplication operator, we would be writing query. How to write a query? We would be writing our query starting with the select keyword. After select keyword, I have opened the parenthesis. After opening the parenthesis, now I wanted to perform multiplication between ten and five. So I have written ten. After that I have given into. After giving into, I have given the next number. The next number I wanted to give this five. So I have given the same. After given the number, I have closed the parenthesis. After closing the parenthesis, mention from clause, given table name as DL and terminated the query with a simple semicolon. So now let me run the query guys. How to run the query? Simply selecting whatever we have written and hitting a green color play button which is present on the top of the worksheet. So you can see here guys, I'm hitting this green color play button. So you can see guys, our output window which is present exactly below our worksheet. In that you can see, if I perform ten into five, what I would be getting, I would be getting fifty. So the same has been present in our output window. Next we'll perform multiplication of another two numbers. So how to write a query? We would be writing our query starting with select keyword. So I have written the same. After select, I have opened the parenthesis. After opening the parenthesis, I have given my first number as some fifty-six. I wanted to perform fifty-six into fifty-six. So I have given my both the numbers. After giving both the numbers, I have closed the parenthesis. After closing the parenthesis, mention from clause, given table name as DL and terminated the query with a simple semicolon. So guys, now I'm done with writing the query. I need to run the query. How I should run the query? Simply I need to select whatever I have written and I need to hit a green color play button which is present on the worksheet. You can see guys, I have hit this button. So I have got the output. If I perform fifty-six into fifty-six, I would be getting three one three six. So the same has been present in the output window. This is about multiplication of two different numbers. Now I wanted to perform division. So how do we write our query? We'll be writing our query starting with select keyword. So I have mentioned the same. After that I have opened the parenthesis. After opening the parenthesis, now I wanted to know what is the output I would be getting when ten is divided by five. So I have written ten divided by five. After that close the parenthesis. After closing the parenthesis, mention from clause, given table name as DL and terminated the query with a simple semicolon. So now let me run the query guys. How to run the query? Simply selecting whatever we have written and hitting a green color play button which is present on the top of the worksheet. So guys, if ten is divided by five, we'll be getting the output as two. So the same output is present in our output window. Now we'll go for writing of next query. For the next query, I have written my query starting with the select keyword. After select, I have opened the parenthesis. Now I wanted to perform fifty-six divided by fifty-six. So I have given the same. After that mention from clause, given table name as DL and terminated the query with a simple semicolon. So guys, now I need to run the query. How to run the query? Simply selecting whatever we have written and hitting a green color play button. So now I'm selecting whatever I have written and hitting a green color play button which is present on the top of the worksheet. You can see guys, if I perform fifty-six by fifty-six, I would be getting one. So the same one is present. So this is about division operator. The next operator that is falling into the range of arithmetic operator is modulus operator. What does modulus operator leaves us? Modulus operator gives us reminder. When we divide a number by other number, what is the reminder we are getting? That will be getting with the help of modulus operator. So now let us go for writing a query for this mod operator. How do we write our query? We'll be writing our query starting with select keyword. After select, now the keyword for modulus operator is mod. After that we'll open the parenthesis. After opening the parenthesis, so guys, we need to give what are the numbers I wanted to give? I wanted to give eight and four. I have given the same. After that close the parenthesis. After closing the parenthesis, mention from clause, given table name as DL and terminated the query with a simple semicolon. If we are done with the query means we need to run the query. How to run the query? Simply we need to select whatever we have written and hitting a green color play button which is present on the worksheet. You can see guys, when eight is divided by four, what is the reminder it is going to live? It is going to leave the reminder of zero. The same has been retrieved by this query. So you need to remember, when you wanted to get the reminder, you need to use mod operator. And the syntax for mod operator is mod of number one comma number two. So now we'll write another query. How to write the query guys? We'll be writing starting with the select keyword. So I have given the same. After that I have mentioned the keyword for modulus operator that is mod. After that I have opened the parenthesis. In the place of number one, I have given A comma. And in the place of number two, I have given three. After given both the numbers, mention from clause, given table name as DL and terminated the query with a simple semicolon. Now we are done with writing a query. So now let me run the query. How to run the query? Simply selecting whatever we have written and hitting a green color play button which is present on the worksheet. So guys, you can see guys, I have hit this button. So I have got my output as two. What is this two? When eight is divided by three, what is the reminder it is going to live? It is going to live a reminder of two. So the same has been retrieved to us by using the mod operator. So guys, with this we are done with arithmetic operators. Are you people all clear with this arithmetic operators?
Yes.
Yes, Priyanka. Everyone of you. Akshata clear? So guys, we are done with the arithmetic operators now. So now we'll go for the next operators we have. The next operators we have are SQL comparison operators. What are the operators that are falling into the range of comparison operators? The operators are equal to, greater than, less than, greater than, equal to, less than, equal to, not equal to. These are the six operators that are falling into the range of comparison operators. So for each of this operator, we'll try to write a query in our database. So now let us move back to our database. This is the database in which we are writing our queries. So now we'll deal with comparison operators. So what are the operators that are falling into the range of comparison operators is equals to? Less than. Less than or equals to? Greater than. Greater than equals to? Not equals to. These are the six operators that are falling into the range of comparison operators. So now we'll go for writing of query for each of this operator. So how do we write our query guys? Before going for the comparison operators, we'll write a simple query for employees table. How do we write a query? We'll be writing our query starting with select keyword. After select keyword, I have mentioned star. Star is used to retrieve all the columns. So I have mentioned star. After that mention from clause. After mentioning from clause, given table name as employees. After given the table name, I have terminated my query with a simple semicolon. So now let me run the query guys. How to run the query? Simply we need to select whatever we have written and we need to hit a green color play button. So you can see here guys, this is the data present for the employees table. In this employee table, I wanted to get only the records where salary is equals to twenty-four thousand. At that time, our comparison operators will get into picture. So how do I write my query? I would explain you. So here I have written my query starting with select keyword. After select, I have mentioned star. After star, mentioning from clause. After mentioning from clause, given table name as employees. After given the employees. So guys, for comparison operators, immediately after the table name, you need to use where keyword. So here I'm given where keyword. After given where keyword, we need to give some condition. Here I wanted to get only those records where salary is twenty-four thousand. So here I'm giving my condition like salary is equals to twenty-four thousand and then I have terminated my query with a simple semicolon. So now let me run the query guys. You can see guys, out of all the reports present in the employees table, I have got only those reports where salary is twenty-four thousand. So if you wanted to get the details only of one particular value, you need to use is equals to. So now I wanted to get all the details where manager ID is ninety. At that time, how to write a query? We'll be writing our query starting with select keyword. So I have mentioned the same. After select, I have mentioned star. After star, I have mentioned from clause. After from clause, given the table name as employees. So immediately after the table name, we need to use where keyword for comparison operators. So I have used it the same. After given where keyword, I have given my condition like where manager ID is equals to ninety. After giving the condition, we'll terminate our query with a simple semicolon. So we have terminated. That means we are done with writing a query. So now let me select the query whatever we have written. So and I'm hitting a green color play button which is present on the top of the worksheet. So guys, if you observe here, I did not got any record. Why I did not got any record? There is no record in the employees table where manager ID is ninety. That is the reason I did not got any record. So now let me change to manager ID hundred and now let me run the query. So I have got all the records where only the manager ID is hundred. So if it is equals to hundred, then only I will be getting such records. This is above is equals to comparison operator. So now we'll move to the next operator we have. The next operator we have is less than. So I wanted to get all the values less than some particular value. At that time, what is the oil, the operator you need to use? At that time, you need to use this less than and then you need to write your query. How to write the query? We'll be writing our query starting with select keyword. After select, I have mentioned star. After star, mention from clause, given table name as employees. So guys, here I'm given in the place of table name, I'm giving employees. Why I'm giving employees? I wanted to retrieve the data from employees table. That is the reason in the place of table name, I have mentioned employees. After that I have used it where keyword. After using where keyword, now I'm giving my condition like where salary is less than twenty-four thousand. So this is my condition. Immediately after the table name, I have used it where keyword. After using the where keyword, I have given the condition and then I have terminated my query. So guys, now let me run the query. How to run the query? Simply selecting whatever we have written and hitting a green color play button which is present on the top of the worksheet. So I'm hitting this button. You can see guys, I have got all the values from the employees table where the salary is less than this twenty-four thousand. So if you wanted to get the values less than some particular value, you need to use this less than operator. So now let us go for writing another query. So here I have written my queries select, starting with select keyword. After select, I have mentioned star. The star it is used to retrieve all the columns. If you wanted to retrieve all columns, you would be mentioning star. After star, mention from clause. After mentioning from clause, given my table name as employees. Immediately after the table name, we'll be using where keyword. After using where keyword, we need to give some condition. The condition I'm giving is salary less than seventeen thousand and then I have terminated my query. So guys, now let me run the query. You know how to run a query. So from this time, I'm not going to explain how to run the query. If I'm saying I'm running the query means I'm simply hitting this green color play button. When I have hit this play button, I have got all the values which are less than this seventeen thousand. So guys, in the next case, I wanted the values which are less than seventeen thousand and I wanted to include seventeen thousand also. At that time, how do we write the query? We'll be writing our query by giving a condition with the operator less than or equals to. So now we'll go for writing of query. So here I have written my query starting with select keyword. After select, I have mentioned star. After star, mention from clause. After from clause, given table name as employees. After given the table name as employees, given where keyword. After given where keyword. So guys, please do remember, why are we given where keyword? For comparison operators, you need to remember that immediately after the table name, you need to give where keyword. Table name always follows where keyword in comparison operators. That is the reason I have given here where keyword. After given where keyword. So here now I'm giving my condition like salary less than or equals to twenty-four thousand and then I have terminated my query with a simple semicolon. So now let me run the query guys. So here I have got all the values less than twenty-four thousand. Apart from that twenty-four thousand is also included. Why twenty-four thousand is also included? Here we have mentioned less than or equals to. So guys, please observe the difference between less than and less than or equals to. If we are mentioning less than that number means that number it is not present in the output window. But if we are mentioning less than or equals to means that number is present in our output. So now we'll go for writing of another query. Here I have written my query starting with select keyword. After select, I have mentioned star. After star, mention from clause. After mentioning from clause, given table name as employees. I wanted to retrieve data from employees. So I have mentioned the same. After given the table name, I have given him here my where keyword. After given the where keyword, I'm giving my condition like salary less than or equals to seventeen thousand. This is the condition I have given. After given the condition, I have terminated my query. And so now let me run the query guys. So here I would be getting all the values which are less than seventeen thousand and seventeen thousand will also be included. Why seventeen thousand will also be included? Since because in the query we have mentioned less than or equals to. That is the reason seventeen thousand is included. So now we'll go for the next operator we have as a part of comparison operator. The next operator that is falling under the range of comparison operator is greater than. For that we'll be writing our query. How do we write our query? We'll be writing starting with select keyword. So I have written the same. After this select, I have mentioned star. After star, mention from clause. After giving from clause, given table name as employees. After giving employees, as this is the comparison operator, immediately after the table name, we need to use where keyword. So I have used the where keyword. After using where keyword, we need to give some condition. The condition here I'm giving is salary. After using where keyword, we need to give some condition, the condition here I am giving is salary. Greater than seventeen thousand. And now let me run the query guys, so first before running the query, we need to terminate the query. So here first I have terminated my query and so now let me run the query. So guys, please observe by running this query, I have got a output window. In that output window, if you observe, I have got all the values from the employees table. Where salary is greater than seventeen thousand only, so now we will go for writing of another query. How do we write our query, we will be writing our query starting with select keyword, after select. I have mentioned star. After star, we need to mention from clause, after from clause, given table name as employees. I wanted to retrieve data from employees, so I have given employees. And after giving the table name, I have given where keyword, after giving where keyword, I am giving my condition like. Salary greater than ten thousand. After given the condition, I have terminated my query with a simple semicolon, so now let me run the query guys. So you can see here guys, I have got all the values which are greater than ten thousand only. But ten thousand is not included, now I wanted to get all the salaries greater than ten thousand. And I wanted to include ten thousand also into that, how to write a query? By using greater than or equal to operator, so now we will go for writing of query. Here I have written my query starting with select keyword, after select, I have mentioned star. After star, mention from clause, after from clause, given table name as employees, after given table name as employees. Immediately after the table name, we need to give where keyword, after giving where keyword, I have given my condition as. Salary greater than or equals to ten thousand and then I have terminated my query. So now let me run the query guys. You can see guys, I have got all the values which are greater than ten thousand and ten thousand is also included. Why here ten thousand is included, why it is not included in the previous case? In the previous case, we have included the operator greater than, that is the reason ten thousand value is not present in the output window. But in the present case, I have given operator greater than or equal to. If you is use is equal to operator, then only you will be getting that particular value. So now we will go for writing of another query, how do we write the query guys, we will be writing our query starting with select keyword. After select, I have mentioned star, after star, mention from clause. After mention from clause, given table name as employees. I wanted to retrieve data from employees table, so I have mentioned the same. After giving the table name, I have given where condition and after where keyword and after given where keyword, I have given my condition. Salary greater than or equals to seventeen thousand and then I have terminated my query with a simple semicolon. So now let me run the query guys. You can see guys, I have got all the values from the employees table. Where the salary is greater than seventeen thousand and seventeen thousand is also included. This is above greater than and greater than equals to, the only difference is. If you mention is equals to means, that particular value will be included. If you do not mention equals to, that particular value will not be included, this is the only difference. So the next operator that is falling into the range of this comparison operator is not equals to. If I wanted to exclude one simple value means, I would be using this not equals to. For that, how to write a query, we will be writing our query starting with select keyword. After select, I have mentioned star, after star, mention from clause, after mentioning from clause. Given table name as employees, after giving the table name, I have given where keyword. After giving where keyword, I have given my condition. Salary not equals to, so guys, in our SQL language for giving not equals to. We need to mention greater than and less than together, if we mention greater than and less than together. That serves as a not equals to, so after not equals to, I have mentioned twenty four thousand. And then I have terminated my query by a simple semicolon, so now let me run the query guys. You can see guys, I have got all the values from the employees table except this value. Why? Because in the query we have mentioned not equals to, so that is the reason excluding that value. We have got all the values in the employees table, now we will go for writing of another query. How do we write our query, we will be writing our query starting with select keyword, after select, I have mentioned star. After star, mention from clause, given table name as employees. After given table name, given where keyword, after given where keyword, I have given my condition. Salary not equals to ten thousand and then I have given the semicolon. With this, I have terminated my query and so now let me run the query guys. You can see guys, I have got all the values from the employee table excluding this ten thousand. In the query we have mentioned not equals to now, that is the reason ten thousand is not included in the output. So guys, with this we are done with the comparison operators, are you guys clear with the comparison operators?
Yes.
Yeah, so very good guys.